Do we do a roll call at this one? Huh?
We really don't do the roll.
Well, good. I was thinking John could come up here and he spells his name the same.
I think you can just call the meeting.
J O N, spells it right.
We don't make decisions.
I know, I know. It'd be a good time. I've got 8:59 yet.
He's watching the same clock I am. There you go.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. Do we have Paul up?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Okay, so it's nine o'clock. We'll call the County, Crow Wing County Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. We will start with roll call.
Commissioner Coring.
Is here.
Commissioner Lubke.
Here.
Commissioner Barrows.
Here.
Commissioner Francine. Commissioner Hoag.
Here.
We're all here. So it looks like we have the City of Cayuna, Section 6, Agate Shores Easement. Tom?
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, good morning. Yeah, so we're here today before you to talk about a potential easement across some tax forfeited lands. So this piece of property here, as you can see on the map, is in Section 6, in the city of Cayuna. And so this easement's a little bit different than ones we brought to you in the past, in that this easement is actually being suggested by Land Services on behalf of the eight properties that are shaded in the yellow to the east of this. And the reason for that is while we were doing our land asset management planning, this is a forty that we've identified for future divestment in '25 or '26, and we want to try to be good neighbors and be proactive in getting, in not blocking anybody's access if we sell this piece of tax forfeited land. So that's what we're here to discuss today. This, it is an existing driveway road through the TF land, no improvements would need to be made. We don't see any detriments to our forest management operations if we were to keep the property, so just kind of a benefit way to be a good neighbor, but wondering if you had any questions or feedback or for us?
So it's just an easement, it's not a, it won't be a county road?
Correct, yeah, correct. Today, it's actually a private road. It's just, as it crosses tax forfeited land, it's just a forest trail for us.
I guess I didn't hear that question, Mr. Chair. What was that question?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Coring, Commissioner Francine was asking whether it was an existing easement and whether it was going to be just an easement, and Tom said it was a, kind of a forest road is kind of the character of that road.
Okay.
So, Tom, we're just making this formal at this point. We're legal, I guess.
Yeah, yep. So these, those eight properties are just using it as their driveway. And the intent is to, you know, if we were to sell this property, not to landlock somebody's driveway or just be proactive and be good neighbors.
So is the easement thirty-three foot, sixty-six foot? What is that easement going to be?
We're proposing a sixty-six foot easement across this property. Yep.
I don't have any questions or concerns?
Do you have any questions?
Nope.
It's nice to be out in front of them rather than scrambling.
Yes.
Any reason that you would prefer to see this on the regular agenda as opposed to consent?
No, this could be just on consent, I would think. Great.
There you go.
Perfect. Yeah, we'll work with the county attorney's office and get some paperwork drafted and come back before you.
Very good.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have the comprehensive plan update. Matt and Chris, and I think Rebecca, Robin's online.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We're here to provide another update on progress that we're making as we're walking through the process to update the comprehensive plan. Today, we're here to, Matt's going to discuss a little bit about refining some of the transportation policies that we discussed last month, and then we're going to introduce the land use and some of the goals and draft policies, and then we'll talk a little bit specifically about some potential change to the land use map itself. But what we'll, I think at this point, though, Mr. Chairs, we'll let Robin kind of explain the process, progress, and schedule overview, and then we'll go from that point into transportation goals and policies. And Robin's got the PowerPoint shared up on her screen, so.
I do. Thank you, Chris. And Commissioners, good morning. Like Chris mentioned, I'm going to talk briefly about the project's schedule and progress. As you can see from our recurring schedule update, we've come a long ways in the last eight or nine months or so. You can see we've done a lot of engagement. We're going to talk a little bit about that as it relates to land use. Done a lot of engagement and communications, and as you can see, kind of on the orange bars, all of the chapters are in some stage of drafting, and so we've actually got about five of them pretty well done, as far as kind of first, first, or not first draft, a good draft that's hopefully going to be ready for your review shortly. And you can see that we've got a few left, and we're going to be talking through land use and transportation, finalizing the transportation today, and then in the next coming month, we're going to be talking about the facilities and infrastructure and the implementation chapters. And then you can see we're already starting to look out to kind of that final community engagement with the community to get their feedback in the July timeframe, and hopefully be to Planning Commission and the City, or County Board later this summer. So very exciting to see so much progress being made.
Robin, I do have a question.
Yes, please.
Yeah, you just, you just said you, when you started out, you said you've had a lot of engagement. Can you elaborate on that? I mean, is that with townships? Is that with lake associations? What, who are you saying that you're engaged with?
Sure. We've had, Commissioners, so we've had, the website has been live, and we've been updating it on a monthly basis. We do have a comment line. We haven't received any comments yet, but we've been sending out newsletters pretty regularly. And on that list, you know, we're sending out newsletters, going to, sending it to local papers, but also I'm sending it directly to a lot of the lake associations and to the chambers. And so they're helping us get a lot of the information out. And they're also sending it, I believe Chris is sending it to a lot of the trail users, so a lot of the different trail-using groups. They've been getting regular updates, so they've been receiving a lot of information. And I know Chris has been engaging, especially with the townships, and meeting directly with some of the cities. He's going to talk a little bit about that as far as the work he's been doing with the land use plan. And then, I'm trying to think of, we've done several radio shows, and, you know, so we're getting, we're getting, we're still getting comments. I, Chris and I both get emails occasionally from groups. So we're hearing, we are hearing from folks, in addition to the, you know, very early, very early engagement that we did around the survey and the online comment map.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I should also mention, too, like, we've, we've been letting people know about these monthly, these monthly meetings and really encouraging people to watch them as well. So we've done some social media, I forgot to mention that. We've been doing some social media pushes to let people know that they can, A, attend these in person, and then they, if they're not able to, we actually are posting the YouTube videos on the project website and saying, hey, you know, it'd be great for you to watch the conversation, and then if you have a comment on that topic, you know, please submit it, so.
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. I think at this point, Matt's going to take over and talk a little more about some of the finalized transportation goals and policies.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. After your call from the last committee of the whole meeting, we had a little bit of a discussion on some of the additions we'd like to see to the goal, not the goals, but just the policies. Looking at the screen, everything in bold is the goals that already exist. We didn't have any potential changes to that. What we did want to add was something on the airport, transit, the rail, and then also adding in for trails, making sure that motorized recreational vehicles are included in that discussion. So I won't read through these word for word, but I'll give a little highlight. The first policy under Goal One, this has to do with the airport, supporting the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport, and specifically accommodating additional passenger and freight movement options out of there. For Goal Number Two, that has to do with trails. Everything reads the same as last time. All we added was the underlined portion where it says motorized recreational vehicles. Below that, we wanted to include something on transit, supporting Brainerd and Crow Wing public transit, and with that, providing transportation alternatives in a responsible and sustainable manner. And then a Goal Four addition having to do with rail, acknowledging the importance of the existing railway network when it comes to movement of freight, and then also with that, enhance the safety of the railway, railway network. And that's specifically looking at, you know, crossings, whether it's pedestrian or for vehicles. And so those were, those were the additions we came up with, and if you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Chair, I do have, and maybe this is for Mr. Whoel, in the first one, Matt, you mentioned the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport. Two things. First of all, Crow Wing isn't included in there, and it is a collaboration or partnership, joint powers, and technically it's not a regional airport. I don't know if that makes a difference in our, how we would, should be wording that. I don't know, because regional is a different designation that we haven't achieved yet in, at the airport.
I think there is an FAA designation that you're referring to, and we, you're correct, we don't meet it. And yet, the name played out at the front says Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport.
True.
And so we're referring to it more as the name as opposed to the FAA designation.
Okay. Does it make sense to have Crow Wing in there also, though?
It's not the name of it. So we're referring to the name now. We could say Crow Wing County Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport, if you prefer. It's just not what's on the sign.
If that ever changes, do we have to change that sign?
You could contemplate doing so, yes. You won't have to, but you could.
Are you done?
I am.
The other thing is the, I've been in contact with people up in the district I serve, and because of the changes that have happened with the Crow Wing or Brainerd-Crow Wing public transit, I'm working with some people up there, and I think you're aware of that, Matt. And I don't know how we identify that in the plan, but looking at this, it just says it's the Brainerd-Crow Wing public transit, which is, that's what it says on that bus, if I'm not mistaken. And we're probably looking at coming up with something different than that, because it's a different need up there, and trying to come up with something different. But I think we want to at least have that in our plan that we're looking at. This, to me, only says that it's just for the Brainerd, this area down here. It's not all of Crow Wing. And so I think we're looking at something different there. I don't know how you want to put that in there, but it'll be in our comp plan, so it does, would say that we were looking at more of a regional-type transportation, even though it'll have, probably have to be done in small pockets wherever it works, so.
So when you were...
I'll be at a Zoom meeting after this one, just to learn more about that, so.
Okay. And I, Mr. Chair, I believe you're talking maybe RTCC stuff?
Right.
And that would be, you know, maybe a different, you want to include something on like different entities in the region or the county, or, I mean, I know for supporting Brainerd and Crow Wing public transit, we have a funding.
Right, that does that. And that, and that takes care of this area pretty well. But, but once you get out into, you know, the rural part of the county, you know, there's, there's really nothing much out there.
Yep.
And so I don't know if we want to identify that as a goal, or, I would like to have something in there in the comp plan that you could hang your hat on, saying that, well, it's in our comp plan. It's something that we've decided is important for Crow Wing County.
Okay. Yeah, I think adding in, within that policy sentence itself, we can add in something that hits on something outside of just the existing transit here.
Yeah, that was just...
I guess, I, I guess I don't think I, I don't think I support that, you know, I mean, there just isn't enough money for somebody to, if somebody's down in Pine Center, that's 25 miles away from Brainerd, I don't know how we can provide transit. There just isn't enough money for that type of thing, and I don't know who's going to pay for it, but I, I, it just, it's just not feasible. So I don't know.
Commissioner Coring, what we've been talking about up north since that has changed, it's not something that's, I'm not looking at anything coming to the county and asking for dollars. There's other organizations, other counties that have done some stuff where the county isn't involved in it. It's a, it's a, I would use like a faith in action or...
Volunteer or...
Yeah. And there's some funds available through Central Minnesota Council on Aging that has supported some of those other transportation programs, some monies through, I think they've gotten some monies through Region Five on some types of programs, Region Five offers and stuff to support that, and didn't use any, I don't think there's any county money coming for the one that's being used up in Hackensack right now.
Correct, yeah. No, Mr. Chair.
That's all other funds. So I agree with you on that, because I think we've pretty much run the rope, or run the gamut on what the Brainerd-Crow Wing public transit can do and what the county's doing there. I agree with you there, that I think that's as much money as we're putting into it. But there is still a need out in the rest of the county for some of that service. So, thank you.
So consensus, you want something included in there? Because I think to Commissioners Coring's comment, I think this is looking outside of just Crow Wing and Brainerd Transit. This is looking at how we can help those that, you know, if someone's in the Pine Center area, utilizing, you know, not from us funding it, but supporting if something were to come here, and Region Five wants a grant, and we give them a letter of support and be like, oh, we identified, we want to...
That we identified it as a need in our comp plan.
Yeah.
And not saying the funding would come from the county. And I totally agree with Paul on that one.
Okay.
Well, and I think we've got to be really careful, because the city of Brainerd is the one who takes care of the money. It doesn't, it isn't through the county, so we need to be careful of what we put in our county plan that we don't have any control over.
And I, Mr. Chair, I know last week, County Administrator Whoel and Engineer Tim Bray, they had a meeting with the city of Brainerd specifically about public transit. I don't know if you'd like to hit on any, I wasn't in attendance, but I know it came up, and we wanted to be careful on our wording because of that aspect.
Yeah.
Well, I for one, I for one don't favor putting anything in there like that. You know, I, there's just no way, when we live, when people live out in a rural area, there's just no way that there's enough money to go pick somebody up at their door. If you live in Minneapolis, you have, you might have to walk, walk 12 to 15 blocks to the bus station. The bus does not pick you up at your door. And, and as far as the North Star train that goes from St. Cloud, that thing is so heavily subsidized, I was told when I was in the legislature, that you could buy everybody that rides that a brand-new car. That's how much it costs. So I would caution about putting something in there that, that says that we're all in favor of, you know, you know, somebody to hang their hat on and say, hey, you got this in your plan, and I'm, I'm 40 miles, I'm up in Emily, and I want to ride to Brainerd. I don't know how we're going to pay for it. I don't know. Don't make any sense to me, but...
Any other comments about transportation at this point?
Here's what I would tell you. What we're trying to do here is take into account all different modes of transportation, the ways in which people move, and the ways in which goods and services move, so that our comp plan takes into account the different ways in which people and goods move, and that we're going to pay attention to it. I think about Lebanon, was it Lebanon, Ohio, where the train derailed?
Yep.
And it, it had such a dramatic impact on their community. Shouldn't we be paying attention to what's going on with rail in our county? It's that kind of a perspective. I don't even know if you need to make a reference specifically to the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport or Brainerd and Crow Wing public transit. The point is that you're going to support transit alternatives that move people who can't afford transportation in a way that we can afford.
Right, right.
Because we can't afford to go to every home. And so it has to be stated in a way that says, where it makes sense, we're going to be supportive, and where it doesn't make sense, we're not. And it's the same with the airport. We're going to see more packages coming through that airport as we, as more and more people order things, next-day delivery. And so we're going to see more packages coming through there. We've seen an increase in passengers moving through there. And so it's a mode of transportation, and we're a half-owner. And so the point of these is to say, we should be mindful and planful of how we already know people are moving, and we're part of it. And so all we're trying to say here is, we know there are multiple modes of transportation, more than just roads and bridges. We're going to pay attention to all of them, because we need to be planful about how we can get people and goods and services moving around in a thoughtful, responsible, and sustainable way. That's the trick here. The nice thing about transit in the airport is, in both cases, about 90% of it is paid by someone else. That helps make it affordable, or there's no way in hell we could afford either one of them.
Right, yep.
So if you want to put it in your plan, Commissioner Coring, what I would suggest is remove the reference to the specific things that you're going to support, because I think that's what's going to get you in trouble, right? It says right here, you're going to support public transit, Crow Wing County public transit. That means more money.
And I...
And that's what I think they're afraid of, and so we need to be mindful.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid of.
Yep, mindful of transit, but I don't think we need to be identifying the specific things. What if there's a, an airfield up in Cross Lake that is supporting one of the businesses there? We should be mindful of that, right? We should care.
Absolutely. That makes sense.
That's what it boils down to. We should care about transit. We should care about air, air freight, air transit. We should care about rail, because they're moving right through our communities. That's what I would suggest, is make it a little more generic.
Okay. I think that gives us good direction going forward on that.
Does that meet your concern, Commissioner Coring?
Yes, very much. And that's, that's what I think it needs to be, more generic, rather than pointing out, I don't want somebody to come to me, you know, I mean, God bless everybody, you know, it's wonderful that they want to live way out in the rural areas, but when you live out in the rural areas, you have to realize you don't have the same services when you're right in town. And, and that's just the way it is. People choose to live out in the rural areas, but they can't have the same services as when you live in town. And that's all I'm pointing out, and I just think if you, you point this stuff out specifically, then somebody's going to throw it back at us and say, well, you've got this in your comp plan. I think if it's more generic, you know, yeah, we all support transit and moving people around in the airport and, and so on and so forth, but I guess I'm just concerned about narrowing it right down to Joe's, Joe's taxi service.
If we support that more generically, it also leaves room for what you described.
For the other people, other players, if they want to show up like that we're warming up there.
I think it is the right approach that will help both of them
More generic, yeah.
Yep.
Deal with their concerns.
We can do that.
Okay.
That seems a pretty clear direction. We can, we can definitely run with that, so...
Clear direction, make it more generic.
Yep, there you go.
It is a comprehensive plan, right?
It is.
So the challenge here is all things, all things. Comprehensive means everything.
Right.
And so that's why it should be here, and it is also why it probably should be generic.
Absolutely.
Still support efforts all around. Right now, we only have the one.
Right. That makes sense?
Robin's nodding her head up and down. Is she in, did you want to jump in here, Robin?
No, I, I think this is a great discussion, and I really liked the feedback, so I think that's something we can, we can adjust.
Thank you.
Other concerns about the transportation one?
Going ones.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, you want to run with the, are the land use goals and draft policies?
I do. So here is what we're proposing for the land use goals and policies. I think we've spent some time and reviewed the goals. It's probably been a few months, so we wanted to include it here just as a refresher, you know, that we are looking at that balanced approach that supports growth. Again, I'm not going to read all of it, but then on the right side of the screen, we have what we're, we have our draft policies, and maybe I'll let folks take a few minutes to, to read those, and then we can have a similar conversation to see if there's anything that you think we're missing or needs to be revised or, or discussed.
Well, I think maybe number two could be more generic, too. Take out Highway 371 and Highway 18, and encourage development along the main highways.
And, Mr. Chair, I would have to agree with that, because we've talked about County Road Three and Four before, and the development that we want along those, but it also goes to the south end, Two and 371 heading south.
Right.
Is going to see some development, I'm sure, going forward, so.
Right.
So I, I think generic, all of a sudden, everything's generic, but I think that's a good idea that...
That gives us, we can go any place.
It gives us breathing room.
Correct. I agree with that completely.
Doesn't lock us into saying that's where we want it only.
Yep.
Look, if you take number one and number two in concert with each other, driving development towards existing infrastructure makes sense. And so where there is sewer and water, generally speaking, is better for development than where you got to put in septic systems. And so number one is saying, we're going to push you toward cities. Number two is saying, and we're going to allow development along major transportation arteries. That's what I would say.
Yeah.
Because you also see that developing along 18, along 371, and those major, I think about the Bly, and that was a little commercial area, you know, Marifield. So I think that's what you're saying is, you want it on major transportation arteries. You don't want development
Yes.
To be too far away.
Right. That's the plan.
Well, I think if you would just change that to major transportation arteries, I think you're going to accomplish what you're looking for.
We can do that.
Great.
So I know...
Any other?
Yeah, so I know, looking at number three, you know, just ensuring compatibility is important between different land uses, obviously to minimize environmental impacts. Number four, I think, is important to just make sure that we're noting that, you know, we're looking at, you know, increasing the potential housing density in locations where it's supported by the city and township capacities on the edge of existing development. So, you know, we'll be looking at some maps coming up here that will show maybe some higher densities around the Brainerd, Brainerd-Baxter area. And number five is just to, you know, foster the use of agricultural land, you know, where it's more suitable. You know, I think that's important to, we want to protect those areas where we have our highest and best agricultural lands as well.
Number four calls for us to have multiple strategies, because we're, we're trying to be compatible, if you will, with the city's zoning, so that it's not such a stark line.
Correct.
I think that's what we're trying to say there is, that depending on what the city is doing, we may need to zone around accordingly. And some cities might be more aggressive in residential development, some might be more aggressive in commercial development. And so where they are doing stuff, we just have to take that into account. What that means is almost a tailored approach to every city.
Right.
What are they doing? Where are their priorities? And what we're trying to do is allow for that growth to occur in an orderly fashion, that eventually those areas might become parts of cities, where there's city water, city sewer, good infrastructure. It's about orderly development. I think number four is really important.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And I like what you have.
Are there any thoughts about this, these, the goals here in the draft policies that are in place?
I might, I'll switch to the next slide. I think this actually, we talked through this a little bit earlier, so I don't think there's anything that we missed here.
No, I agree. I think, I think we can go to the next slide.
Okay. I think, Chris, you were going to pick up on this one, too?
Yeah, I was. You know, so when we had some of that feedback earlier, you know, this year, and, and in '22, or in '23, excuse me, some of the comments we got back where there was questions about the commercial, you know, storage facility... Um, some of the comments we got back where there was questions about the commercial, you know, storage facility development was maybe a questionable use of some of the property that they're seeing, especially up on Highway three seventy-one. Uh, you know, thirty-five percent of the county folks that actually sent the surveys in, excuse me, disagreed that with smaller rural lots within county limits. But that would mean the opposite side of that, the sixty-five percent, supported smaller lots, you know, for, um, small, you know, smaller rural lots. The majority of people that, uh, gave us some comments were neutral, um, that the county should have a more sustainable development policy and programs. But water and natural resources were top priority included in the constraints of, of development. So everybody was really wanting to make sure that, you know, when we develop, that we're making sure that our water and natural resources are, you know, protected at the same time. And the feedback that we got from County Board and the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, um, was really paying more attention to the constraints that we see in line with our land use, such as soil types, you know, drainage, depth to water table, we had those discussions, you know, at our previous, uh, meetings in the past. Uh, we also recognize from the, uh, discussion with the board and the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, just the need for more housing to meet the demand. You know, smaller lots, starter homes, um, are, seem to be in short supply right now. Uh, and then focusing those higher intensity developments around the cities and areas that have existing services and, and the infrastructure. Uh, so that was kind of the feedback we heard from kind of the public, kind of shaking that down a little bit, and then what we heard from you guys is that seemed still pretty accurate from our previous discussions. I see heads nodding, so I'll take that as affirmative.
I do, um, Chris.
Yeah.
One thing that, that I've experienced and seen in my life was, you know, Baxter, when it was building, early on when it was building up. And they built motels out there that were on septic systems.
Mm-hmm.
And then came along the water and sewer. And so we're talking about encouraging development adjacent to basically the cities, so just outside the cities where there isn't. And so what we'll see is development take place on a septic system. And then they'll annex some of that property in, and these people are going to see, you know, get a five-year window to switch over to.
Right.
Public water and that, so. So I, it's just, uh, a heads up that that happens, and I realize it's a problem that we can't solve, but.
Right.
It might be a heads up for realtors that they want to let people know, but that's where we need to encourage it is, is where it's most likely to get annexed into. And then public services will be provided, so.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Commissioner, I think it's important too for people to do, um, their due diligence when purchasing property, if they're adjacent to the city to, you know, make a call, say, is there any interest? Is there any potential for annexation the next, you know, five, ten years? To make sure that, you know, so they take that planning into account when they decide to develop their property too, so.
How many times do they come back and say, I didn't know?
Mm-hmm, right, right.
Due diligence is.
Yep.
We, we do have some circumstances, I don't know how many of them, but I think about Donlengers.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And that was developed outside the city limits of Baxter. It was on the north side of the road, south side of the road was Baxter. There was city water and sewer stubbed up to the road. And so at that point in time, working with the city of Baxter, it did not make good sense to allow a septic system to be put in where city and water, water and sewer were stubbed right adjacent. And so we said, you must connect. The city said, if you connect, you must be annexed.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's orderly development, and I would say that, uh, Mr. Donlinger wasn't really thrilled with us at that point in time. Um, but I think in the long run, it is what's best for the community, that city water and sewer is hooked up for commercial development when you can.
I agree. I remember that situation well.
Yes.
So I think, unless there's any other questions on the land use side, we can, um, go to the next slide. Uh, so some of the changes that we're proposing, uh, right now, we have two commercial districts, uh, Commercial one and Commercial two. And Commercial one is that, um, those areas that are closer to the cities, Commercial two is more the rural, um, commercial, um, zoning districts. And when I took a look at the land use table and checked the difference between the two, there wasn't any. There was one different land use between Commercial one and two. So it seems rather, um, I, I think we can streamline it a little bit if we were just to go to a commercial district and just have, instead of having a C one, C two, we would just have a commercial zoning for the county. Uh, because the, the one use was not a, not a big deal that would, would happen, I don't, as I looked at it, I said, I don't know why it's in Commercial one and different in Commercial two, I didn't know the difference really. So I think that's a proposal that we have, and then we also propose, we have a light industrial and a heavy industrial. Uh, you know, we have limited industrial in the county anyway, and, you know, our main industrial, um, piece of property is Clough up at Lake Edward Township. And so it, it's also, again, I think just a streamline, it makes sense just to have an industrial, you know, an industrial zoning district for that. So I think that would make that just a little more simple for people to understand, you know, maybe the rules and regulations with that.
Was there a big difference between one and two on industrial?
No.
No.
No, there really wasn't. I mean, we have very, very limited industrial in the county, very limited, so there's no need, I don't think, to have two districts for that.
But what's the difference between a C one and a C two? What is, uh, just real quick?
So Commercial one is the zoning, it would be adjacent to a city. And so that's, that's would be, if you look on the map, it'd be purple.
Right.
It'd be that part that's adjacent to a city, and Commercial two would be that part more rural, um, away from the cities, out into the more rural parts of the county.
Uh, what types of businesses are C one and what types are C two?
That's, as I, they're about the same, there was really, when I looked at the land use table, the differences were pretty much the same, there really wasn't.
Proximity to the city.
It's just proximity to the city is all it is.
Yeah, that's all it is.
It's not really what it, what's being done in there doesn't change.
No, there, there really isn't, uh, anything that's, um, in that, in the land use tables that are different between Commercial one and Commercial two, very limited. So it just makes sense, I think, just to merge them together into one.
I agree.
Okay.
And then we also had some discussions, um, you know, with the board about, uh, our residential, um, you know, where we're at right now for our land use districts. Uh, if you see on the, on the right, that's our current map now, and what we really were just, as we talked about with the board, was just the idea of one click. You know, kind of redo, you know, down, you know, increasing the density in certain areas around one click. Some spots, depending on how we look at it, maybe had a couple clicks based on certain situations, but, um, I think it's, uh, the, the feedback that we're hearing from, you know, the development community is that, you know, there's a desire to need for some smaller homes, starter homes. And I think this has the potential of, uh, helping to, um, achieve that. Uh, another one is just, you know, again, we'll look at the first assessment district and, and the focus, as we talked about, where we want to see a lot of the, um, you know, some of that, uh, more higher density would be, you know, adjacent to, you know, a Brainerd-Baxter and, and, uh, you know, and some of the other cities. And so, like I said, this is the current map now, um, and I think we could just maybe go to that next slide.
Can, can I just comment on that map? Because, uh, go back one slide. You know, that's probably the first time I've seen a map that shows where the county's zoning is and where our zoning doesn't apply.
Right.
And it really is pretty stark that about, hmm, a little over half of the county is covered by county zoning.
Right.
Um, and I think if we did it by population, we would find probably two-thirds of the population of the county lives in areas regulated by someone else.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
It's a, you know, it's kind of a stark map that shows you, there are a lot of fingers in this pie of trying to protect our water quality and make sure that we have, uh, orderly development. And that's why we got to work with our city partners. That map shows you why we got to work with our city and township partners, it's also got Crow Wing and, and, uh, Irondale Township.
Irondale, correct, yes.
Who choose to do their own zoning. And so you see, this is, that map is why it's important to work with your partners, because otherwise you're going to have stark lines on a map that aren't going to make any good sense.
Right. Well, I, I think it's probably good, a little, a little maybe, a reminder of how we even got to that map might be helpful too. So when I started back in the county in oh eight, I started in, uh, September, Tim was here in July, a few months before I started. And, um, I remember, um, there being, most county board meetings had anywhere from, the one meeting a month, we'd have anywhere from eight to ten rezones requests a month because the map just had some serious, serious, um, issues that were very inadequate to, to accomplish. You know, I think what we needed to do as far as from a, you know, a larger perspective. And so we, in two thousand and eleven, uh, went through a big process to update the map, and that's what you get, um, today. And so it's, if you see a lot of these, especially down in Commissioner Coring's district, you see a lot of these brown lines, that's around roads. And so we wanted to, you know, make sure that the, you know, we put the development on the roads and we protected those ag areas, which is that dark green. And so you, there was a kind of a myth, you know, our method to the madness as to how we kind of put that together. And a lot of that hasn't changed, you know, our philosophy from that amendment in two thousand and eleven to what it is today, really hasn't changed. It's just asking now, are we, are the densities correct? Where would we rather see, you know, higher densities, um, within the county? So I think it's good to sometimes know where have we come from to, to where we're at, because a lot of people have asked a lot of questions about this, and I said, well, if you'd have seen that map prior to two thousand and eight, um, or two thousand and eleven, um, you would understand how we got to this point. And, and this worked for, well, for many years, we had limited years with, we didn't have any rezone requests. And now we're starting to see more and more rezone requests, so it lets us know that, you know, hey, something needs to change up here. We need to, we need to calibrate and, and, uh, take a look at this again. So that's really the process upon which I think we're looking at this today. So if we take a look at the next, yeah, go ahead, Robin.
Chris, and Commissioners, I might add one other thing since we're, since we're highlighting kind of what else is on the map. Those gray areas, um, are all areas that we've identified and talked about as being constrained. So that's, you know, the shoreline area, the wetland area, steep slopes, um, things like that. You know, you can see the rings around the lakes and you can see some of the other areas along here, so just wanted to highlight that as well. Now go to the next map.
I think it is important to just, to look at the water. I mean, when you look at a map, when you look at the county map, I mean, four hundred and fifty-plus lakes, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of water in this county. And so there's a lot of, you know, work that needs to be done to make sure that we keep, you know, that water quality the way it is. But, I mean, it's, it's just a neat map to see with all the different lakes, you can see why we're Minnesota's favorite place. So what you see, um, with the change, you, if you look on the left over here, this is the existing now. And if you look to the right, you'll see a lot of changes from some of this, uh, the, the blue and the dark and the brown up in here going to more of an RR five. You'll see a lot, R, R two point five, the yellow, um, a lot of yellow, so two point five acre zoning, um, out in the rural parts of the county. But what you'll see is in first assessment, uh, the proposal has been for one acre zoning in the first assessment. And then for the, for the corridor of County Road three from basically the Wise Road, um, up through Marifield, um, would be proposed as being commercial as long as a little bit of commercial out here to the east of Brainerd on County eighteen. And if you look down south from where Commissioner Coring's district was to here, there's really nothing has changed as far as where we want to see the development. We're just saying, we think that, um, going from a five acre, from ten acre down to five, and then, you know, there's some acre spots that have this dark green. Uh, really didn't think that was the right fit either, so we want to make it a uniform, um, five acre zoning along all the major roads, uh, down south. And then, um, just clarified over here, um, down in the Fort Ripley area, that, that along the, along the river here would be five acre, some two and a half acre zoning here along three seventy-one. Uh, but we're still maintaining and preserving our, our, our agricultural lands here, and you can see up north, we're still preserving our forested lands up here, that's an ag slash forested zoning, and you see that dark green up here. So that's really what we're proposing today, we've had discussions with each of you individually and, and to go through this to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. Are there any questions? We do have, if we go to the next page, we do kind of zoom in a little bit, we kind of try to cut the county in half a little bit so you could just get a little bit closer in perspective. And so, uh, again, this is just trying to do a little bit of an overlay on down south, but here's like south along lake here, and then you've got Malax over here, and then that garrison area. Again, you're still seeing, we've got some of these, um, commercial nodes at some intersections which we think makes sense. And then again, up, this is the Highway eighteen up here to the east, and then, uh, a lot of this area here that you see, um, up north, that five. But you're going to see just a lot of, a lot of two and a half acre zoning, and so, um, outside of, you know, the first assessment district. Are there any questions or thoughts about this part of the map? I think we go to the next slide, Robin. Now we look further to the north, again, um, we still, you know, when we get out as, you know, I think as Tim had mentioned earlier, when we get further, you know, um, away from, um, you know, the chances of some of these properties ever being annexed into a city, we still want to, uh, make sure there's adequate, you know, property size to put a, you know, site it for two septic systems and, you know, to be able to put a house on and, and, and have room out there. And so that's why, um, going out in this area, I think, makes sense to be in that, uh, in that two and a half acre area. There, we do have a little bit of one acre next to Nisswa here, and we have a little bit of one acre here next to Jenkins, where you could have some of that one acre there. I did have a chance to chat a little bit with, uh, with some of the cities, particularly Brainerd and Baxter, and just what their thoughts were, and, and, uh, and their preference would have been smaller, smaller lots, um, around, especially like the first assessment area. If the city were ever to want to annex to the north, they would rather have the smaller lots than have to deal with, you know, two point five, five or ten acre lots, their preference was the smaller ones. When I had the discussions both with Brainerd and Baxter, they're really, um, there's no long-term plans as far as what they hope to annex to or where they want to go. So there hasn't been a lot of discussion about annexation from the cities, but if there was to be that, they would prefer to see that, uh, that one acre, you know, zoning up in the north side of, uh, uh, north of Brainerd Baxter, the first assessment, and then that spot off to the east, you know, over on the east side of, of, uh, Brainerd and that area. They were supportive of both of those would make sense. And then nothing has changed as far as what you see up here by Nisswa and Jenkins, no change, that's always been one acre there since we made the order, or the updated the map back in two thousand and eleven. So, I mean, to, this is a substantial change, and, you know, so there's, there's a couple ways you can do it. One is that you can, we can just create this, a future land use map, and so then when people want to come in and develop their property, they can go through the land use map amendment process and say, well, your property is designated as being one acre. Now we have to go through the Planning Commission Board of, you know, Adjustment, come to the county board to that process. Or you can, as we go through the comp plan process, you can adopt this map as your new, like we did back in two thousand and eleven, which is our current and a future land use map, because that's how we want to see development occur. So those are kind of the two options we have as far as this, um, my preference would be the latter. I think we should, if we're going to update the map, I think we should update the map, and I don't really think we need to have people go through the process of, of actually coming back before you if we've already really got a map in place as to what we'd like to see it. Like we did for the last revision, if this is the route that you chose to go, uh, we left a, a twelve-month window open for somebody who disagreed with how the, the map was changed, that there would be a no fee. They could come in, they could go to the Planning Commission and the board, and then come to the county board and explain why they felt that they, um, should have been, you know, zoned to a different, into a different land use map district, so.
And how many of those did we have, do you recall?
Oh, I'd say a dozen, I mean, it, it wasn't much. People were pretty happy with what that was changed to, so.
The school trust property is another example of where we had to redo that one, where, you know, I think we just guessed wrong.
Mm-hmm.
But I think to Chris's point, and a dozen of them across a county of sixty-five thousand, uh, people with this many parcels, oh my goodness. I would suggest that good planning makes for less zoning.
Correct, that's the story.
So this is good planning, and I think what, what you're seeing is, this is where you're anticipating the growth is going to occur naturally anyway, so let's plan for it. And so I think, I agree with Chris, if you're going to do that, just rip the Band-Aid off, recognizing you will have some corrections you need to make. But on balance, it's going to make your future planning efforts come to fruition better.
Yeah, we have had conversations with, you know, especially at the first assessment with our different developers and, and that, and, and they're desiring, they said, we'd like to see one acre because we'd like to start, you know, there's a desire to build some of these more, you know, starter homes, um, within the county because it is hard to find housing if you're moving from out of the area here. You know, I moved down here in oh eight, I bought a house and it was a starter home by any stretch of the imagination, and now according to the county, it's worth probably up in the, close to four thousand dollars. And it's not, it's, it's would be outpriced for somebody just coming into the community new with a, you know, with a basic job, it'd be hard to, so the, you know, the housing market, I think, is very tight with some of those homes. I think this has the opportunity to provide that opportunity for some of those, um, you know, um, homes to be developed so that we can build up the workforce and, and have those opportunities for people. I mean, we had that situation in our office with, uh, one of our staff who was driving up from, uh, St. Cloud every day, he did it for about, you know, probably a couple of years, and finally, he just couldn't find a house. And so we ended up taking a different job down the St. Cloud area and was able to find a house down there and things, you know, worked out well. But, um, I don't want, I just think we want to be careful to not have housing be a barrier to, you know, growing and attaining and retaining a really strong workforce for Crowley County.
Mr. Chair, I, for, for me, I, I support Chris in, in his recommendation. Sorry, Commissioner Coring, go ahead. Sorry, Commissioner Coring, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, it makes total sense to me. If this would have maybe been ten years ago, I probably would have been reluctant, because I feel like my constituents down in southern Crow Wing County, they, I think in the past they've wanted to preserve, there's a lot of farmers and a lot of ag land, and they want to preserve these big tracts, and they hate to see somebody buy a forty acre parcel and then they put a house right in the middle of it, you know, and then that whole forty is shot, you know, so I, I guess I, I've, I've kind of come around to the fact that smaller parcels to build a house is, and especially on like Sleepy Hollow Road or County Road 45, it just totally makes sense, and I, I find that the people that I represent down there, I think they've kind of shifted and changed, I know if it's a new generation is realizing that there's just, just more houses and more people wanting to build next to mom and dad or grandma and grandpa, and, and, you know, a smaller lot is really all they need. So I, I totally support adopting, you know, rather than making somebody go through the land use process.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair, member, you know, members of the Board, I also, I think a question comes up then, based on what I heard from Commissioner Coring, you know, right now the minimum, max, the, the density for agricultural forested lots is a thirty-five acre minimum, and everybody wants a thirty-five acre minimum until they want to give a piece of property to their nephew or to their daughter, and then they have to come in and have that discussion. So I think, you know, the question that I think we've been discussing too is, what is the appropriate density for those ag forested lands? You know, right now it's basically one per forty. Would it make sense to say two houses per forty, you know, because I know that when we changed that density back in 2010, and the big push was, it was fifteen acre density back prior to 2010, was fifteen acres, and the big push was, we really want to get that to thirty-five acres, we want to preserve these large, you know, chunks of our ag and our forested land, which, you know, I think we all support, until we want a smaller lot, and then they have to come in and go through that process of trying to amend, and sometimes it's hard to, you know, you might have a piece of, a parcel that's out in the middle of, you know, some of these ag pieces, and it doesn't make sense to be an R10, because there's no R10 around it, and so you feel like at that point you're spot zoning, and which is really something we want to, you know, not support, but then at the same time when they want to, you know, start splitting up some of their land, and they, you know, sometimes there's a situation where they need to sell ten acres just to be able to stay there and be able to afford to stay on the property, sometimes the land has to pay for itself. And so I think that's a question that we need to wrestle with too, is what is the raise, you know, the density for ag forested?
And you're setting in motion the future land use conflicts, because as more houses develop in agricultural areas, the sights, sounds and smells of agriculture will get to be a problem with those people who grew up in town but want to live in the country.
Right.
And Commissioner Coring, I would argue, we've seen that over the course of time too, that the farmer wants the big chunk of property until he wants to retire, and then he wants to subdivide the property.
Yes.
Because that's what makes the best financial sense for that farmer. It's, the problem gets to be his neighbors, and they want to keep farming, but you start putting a housing development next to a farm field that you're going to spread manure on, and I can assure you, you will get calls.
Right.
Exactly, you're spot on, Tim.
I think you got the answer to your question, didn't you?
I think so.
Very good.
In the couple of times that I've done this on a lot smaller scale, the biggest challenge we faced when we were changing our land use, was somebody with a residential house saying, well, my house is now in commercial. Well, no, that's what we see the future land use for that property, your house is still residential, it's taxed as residential.
Absolutely.
That was the only questions that we really had coming about. They, but it also set them to say that maybe when that house, they're not going to hand it down to their kids, maybe they'll find out it's better to, to send it on its way and, and sell it to a developer to develop as a commercial property.
Correct.
It helps give them an idea ahead of time of what we, what we're looking at in the long range.
Right.
But that was on a lot smaller scale, this is a lot, lot bigger.
Correct, yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
So I think our next slide says discussion, but I think we've already handled that.
Yeah, looks like it.
Robin, do you want to hit the three-month look ahead?
You've got your microphone off. Robin, you've got your microphone off.
We need to hear you, Robin.
I agree, you can read the slide, just kidding. So we have, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do have another meeting scheduled for next month, so we'll see you on the 21st, I believe, where we'll be presenting the infrastructure chapter and the implementation chapter, so I think those are our last two final, final chapters, continue to solicit feedback, and then I think in our June meeting, hopefully by June, we should have the chapters pretty well writ, pretty well written, and we'll be presenting the final, kind of an overview of the final draft to you, and starting to prepare for public input. So then hopefully in June, if things go well, we'll open up the public comment period in the Ju- July timeframe, and that's when we would hopefully, you know, do a lot of, again, a lot of engagement as far as, you know, doing social media, WJY, you know, hopefully we can do a little article or, you know, interview about that, articles, we'll be doing a public meeting, and then hopefully going through the public hearing process in the July, August timeframe. Any questions?
Just a comment, you know, when we, as we got this kind of roughed in here pretty good, you know, heading down that route, I know reaching out to the, to the, you know, some of the cities are worried about their city stuff, some townships are only worried about their township stuff. Can we make a point to at least go out there to those meetings, or a couple of those board meetings, and, and see if we can get on their agenda, just to say, here's where we're at?
To go to the individual townships, you mean?
Well, that's what I'm questioning, I'm just bringing it up, I don't know if we want to do that or not, but, but, you know...
Well, we've, we've, we've engaged the townships, you know, we've had special meetings with them, we had one last, was it last, oh, gosh, when did that, oh, must have been last fall or, we had, we, we had the townships, and we had them in, and we got about, I think, maybe half of them showed up, maybe. We, then we had another township meeting where they invited them in, and unfortunately we didn't have a lot of, you know, a lot of response.
So I mean, if we can ask them if they show up, that's up to them.
Yeah, and then we sent out, we sent out multiple emails and opportunities to provide some comments back to us, give us some feedback, and unfortunately that was pretty limited on that, and so, you know...
We made the attempt.
I think we've reached out to them, and it just, I think, you know, possibly waiting until the plan itself has been drafted, and so, you know, we can, when the plan is drafted, they'll definitely get a copy of it, they can review it. If they choose to call us and ask us to come to a meeting, maybe that would be, you know, the townships may be asked us to come to a meeting, we may attend those, but I'm not sure all the townships are, you know, really as concerned about this as others.
Isn't there a township association meeting coming up, is that the end of this month?
It's next week.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
You're going to be there for that?
We'll see, I'm hoping, I got something with my kids that night, but I'm hoping I can see if Gary will take care of it.
Or somebody maybe to present?
Land Service will be there for sure, yeah.
Yeah, to, to maybe present kind of a, that'd be a good place for that.
Yeah, Land Service will be there.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure if this makes any difference, but the 21st of May and the 18th of June are both county meetings, not county board.
Okay, we'll update those.
Oh, update those dates.
Yeah, we can update those for sure.
It's fine, it's just the title.
We'll update those, thank you.
Chris, one fin-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, just, Chris, one final question from me, I, have you, or is anybody engaged with the Metropolis of Jenkins much?
Come on now, Paul. I got a gift for you when you get back, I got a gift for you.
Next slide. I think that's it, I think we're, I think that wraps it up, so.
Move over here, and you two can continue this.
I think we'll wrap it up, if there are any, are there any other questions about the process, or, or anything else?
More slides.
Yeah, I'm going to hold that, I think, so, yeah, I'm going to, I think, I think I'm just going to hold those maybe.
Anything else, anybody?
I think that's...
We done? Like what you've done.
Yeah.
Looks good.